Okay, so I have us in chapter seven and under line nine.
Okay, all right, while we're waiting for Nathan to join us and to be efficient, I will call this meeting to order. Nathan, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, we can.
Oh my gosh, three different ways, I attempted, no, go, no, go ahead, I'm, I'm on the phone, I cannot get my app to work on my, my Zoom app on my phone, it won't let me in, so, phone it is.
All right, okay, so, this is the February twenty-fifth special meeting of the Town Gown Committee, meeting for the purpose of continuing our review of Plan of Conservation and Development Goals and Objectives. And I believe we have a quorum, I would like to welcome our new member Laura Crowe.
Thank you.
Who is replacing Dale, who Dale Rose, who asked not to be renewed. So we regret his leaving, but we welcome Laura, so.
He's busy working all of a sudden, so.
So what, for, for your information Laura, what we're doing is we are refusing, refusing, we are reviewing the Mansfield tomorrow Plan of Conservation and Development preparatory to planning and zoning, creating a new one, because they have to be rewritten every ten years, and we're up. So this last one was written in 2015, and it is very complex and detailed, and has lots of goals and objectives. And we are looking at the ones that involve this committee, and we've already done chapter two through six.
Okay, so, chapter seven, I found this very complicated, by the way.
Oh, you did, did you? How unusual.
I am on chapter seven, but I can't say that I've fully reviewed everything before this, so, I apologize.
It's one step at a time, and everybody finds it confusing, I don't know if, you know, it's like the state budget, they used to say there are only two people who'd actually read the whole state budget, one of the chairs of appropriations and the proofreader. So I, I don't know who has actually read every single piece of this, of this chap, of this document, because it, it's, it's a work created by committees. And that has both the advantage of having many, many brains behind it, but it also has the disadvantage of being very, very complex. So Jennifer.
One question, I don't understand how to know what this committee is working on, is it everything?
No, just those things which involve town and university relations.
So Laura, the spreadsheet that you received, if I may, Mayor,
Please.
is just, just relates to the action items that have the university, the town university relations committee associated with them, just so you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that there's like a hundred and fifty pages of action items, so, yeah, and one of the things I hope to do is perhaps make it this more concise, more actionable, based on this feedback, and by the, the other goal I have is that because of the way we're updating this, I think that more than just two people will have read this full Plan of Conservation and Development. So I think we're all going through, our whole department and our Planning and Zoning Commission uses this all the time, but I think by having all of our boards and committees really take a deep dive, it allows us to get all of your expertise and have more people have read this, but really more people who can really own it, because it's really, it's supposed to be the vision for the next ten years. So with that, unless anyone else wants to say anything, Mayor, should I start sharing my screen?
Please, I won't be able to see everybody because there's a limit to the number of thumbnails I can get on my computer. Well, I think actually I do have everybody, but at the cost of being able to read the, the words on the, on the share.
I have it open on my, my computer, so I just, it's page seven we're on, right, is that correct?
Chapter seven, yep, exactly.
Jennifer, is there any chance you could increase the size of the prints? There's a lot of blank spaces to the right that we don't need, but we really see the letters.
Yeah.
Oh, thank.
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
Great, so we, the next action item is to continue to encourage UConn to house an average of seventy percent of undergraduates on campus over each five-year period. So currently, I think UConn is at about sixty percent, I had that number from a spreadsheet that Nathan had given me, so.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, so, and over the next five-year period, maybe you can get up to, back up to seventy.
I don't think.
Well, I think that, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I, I don't think that's our goal, because we are now building off-campus housing.
I agree.
I, I think that we want the, we want students in the community, but we want them in the appropriate housing.
Right, and I, and that was a point I was going to make as well, Mayor, is that we are, I did some math based on the numbers we're currently at, and maybe at in the fall, which is a very good number to be at, and if we're building more off-campus housing, it would benefit us to see, have a population that would be able to fill some of those beds. Currently, there's a concern with the number of students that may not be able to fill those beds. So with the number of apartment complexes, especially coming so close to the campus, it would benefit us to see if we can, if students will be living in some of those, those apartment complexes.
So perhaps the appropriate goal for this, for this sentence would be to determine an appropriate percentage so that the private housing off-campus, the, the multifamily private housing off-campus is full. Because the town doesn't want these, these, these private companies to go broke, right? And we don't really want the, we don't want the, the rents to be too high for, for medium-income students either.
Jan, just to take a step back for the exercise we're doing today, I mean, we are benchmarking what the goal was at the time it was set versus what the goal should be in the next plan, right?
Yeah, so, so I think we're, we want a mod, we want a, we want some form of the school to continue, but it needs to be modified. Is this what I'm hearing?
I would say the authors of this first document back in twenty fifteen were interested in taking the pressure off of off-campus housing and trying to make UConn have at least seventy percent on-campus housing.
There were two.
We're changing what the authors, the original authors had, and, 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 yeah, would we have a consensus of the, of the citizens of this town as, as that is the way they would like to see it? Are we speaking for the populace?
I don't think anybody's going to want to see empty dorm, empty private housing around campus. And I'm not talking about single families, but I don't think anybody's going to want to see these big developments with empty spaces.
And that's not what I'm saying, I, I'm assuming that these, these developments are being put up, the fact that UConn will be increasing its enrollment. But no matter what, if you decrease housing on campus, you're going to increase housing demand off-campus, and you're going to have more apartment complexes going up. And I'm just curious if that would be what the citizens of this town would want, that's what I present.
May I make a suggestion? Maybe, maybe we just need to eliminate this, because I think the town is watching the university, the university is watching the town, we're going to end up with an appropriate amount of housing. So I don't think we need to set what the percentage would be.
Right, and in, and back in twenty fifteen, oh, sorry, Nathan, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to agree with that comment, and I think that a specific metric may not be what we want as a goal, but maybe we want to, if we want to do anything, maybe want to establish that there are joint plans for housing between the university and the town, or something like that.
Yes, we should work together, work together, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, that sounds good, that we work together and, you know, meeting the needs of, of the student housing, whether it be on-campus or off, or combination of thereof.
And just to go back to twenty fifteen, there were two parallel competing priorities, one was this percentage, the other was building more multifamily housing to pull students out of the single-family rentals, so we're doing that, we're, we actually are at a point where that construction is happening, it's underway. And they're really, I completely agree with Paul, there is not a need for us to determine a percentage amount on or off.
I, I don't think we've reached the goal of creating housing that's going to clear up the single housing demand, honestly.
Well, I think the single-family housing demand is driven by a couple of things, it's driven by people who, who want to live as cheaply as possible, which they can't do in these, in these multifamily developments. I think it's also driven by, by groups that want to have a party house. I mean, that's.
I'm not, no, I disagree that everybody's out there looking for a party house, people are just not, they're looking for non-communal living, where they don't have to.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, Brian, I'm saying there are two demands, there's a demand for, for housing which is allows somebody who doesn't have a lot of money to live communally and less expensively, but there's also, there are some, and, and John, you, I think you, this is what you said, that the most problematic housing are the, are the organizations.
It can be, when we see large issues that are occurring in the community, it typically is associated with, I'm not going to say which organization, but some organizational behavior where there's group, large group gatherings. So those are individuals that typically don't live in apartment complexes, they prefer to live in single families.
Something I think that is, is budget-related, is there some way for the university to define who needs money and help with subsidized housing? I mean, when housing is fifteen hundred dollars a month, the students can't afford that.
Can I just, can I jump in just a little bit, can, I think we're, we're probably this is a really complicated, the, the goal of this is to benchmark, I think, and we're going to have to ruminate on how to solve this problem, and I think that's maybe the Town Gown Committee could add that to a future agenda, but for the purpose of this, I think this goal, we should, we want to abandon it and modify something like, I'm, I'm trying to think of the, and we don't need to wordsmith it now, but work together to meet the needs of students living in Mansfield while maintaining, like, quality.
Residential neighborhoods.
Of life.
In residential neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Can I just, another question, are the new, is any of the new housing being built, so it is communal, like five units and one kitchen, or anything like that?
Not the off-campus housing.
Yeah, yes, the, the, actually, the, the hub is what we call a group dwelling, it's not, it's, that comes in under group dwelling, and so they can have up to six, I think they're planning on having, they, they can basically rent by the room, they're not confined by the definition of family, like three or four, no more, like in a single-family house or in other apartments. So just in that zone, which is immediately adjacent to the campus, near King Hill and North Eagle Road, that's permitted.
I, I think we ought to not abandon, but modify this, and I don't know, should we put this in the parking?
So modify.
Yeah, modify it.
I think you are, we have to not make a comment that this, that the situation has changed since this was developed. And, and.
Modify would, would accommodate the change, wouldn't it?
And, well, I mean, part of it is, has this been accomplished, or, or is it ongoing, that's, you know, what we have done so far. And I think we need to say about this that the situation has changed, although the problem with the residential neighborhoods has not.
That's good, we recognize that.
So is, did I capture this, I just want to make sure I'm capturing this, modify, work together to meet the needs of students living in Mansfield while maintaining quality of life in residential neighborhoods. The situation's changed with the increase of multifamily housing units.
Sounds good.
That's good.
All right, so then the next one is very tied to this, work with UConn and legislators to support continued development of on-campus housing.
I would eliminate it.
Yeah, I don't think we need it. Nathan, I don't think, I, I don't know if you agree, but I don't think we need that.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, collaborate with UConn Off-Campus Student Services to educate students on community expectations and address student housing issues in neighborhoods.
Ongoing.
Ongoing.
I would say, and I, one thing I would add here is that this work is effectively done with multiple different constituents, so that would be the state police, it would be housing code enforcement, so to, to think that that my office could do all of this alone, I would ask for some modification, that this work is done with multiple part, campus partners, multiple partners, both through the Dean of Students' Office and with the town of Mansfield.
The, the people who do this are listed as Building and Housing Inspection Police, Town Manager, Mansfield Community Campus Partnership, which no longer exists.
Does not exist.
But, but this committee has sort of taken part of that responsibility.
Yeah, so it looks like we did, we took, everything that was in the community campus partnership was absorbed by the Town University Relations Committee. And Mayor, that came shortly after the conclusion of the Quality of Life Committee. I think it was twenty thirteen is when it finally concluded.
Okay.
So when, John, when you talk, when you meet with landlords, or you meet with students at the beginning of a semester, who goes along?
State police and often someone from Mike Nintu's office.
Okay, I'm just going to continue typing, if you guys want to go down to five, do you want me to, is it helpful for me to read them, or do you? That was.
Oh, we can see them.
Yeah, okay.
So that, five is sort of aspirational. Ongoing, aspirational.
But, but it is, that's the group that I was just asking John about.
Yeah.
There is a group that does go out.
Well, there's not a group, this, the, the way, if we go way back to the inception of the office, it was done with volunteers across the university, bringing them off-campus, having neighbors be part of this, this group that would go out and talk with students in neighborhoods. Some of the challenges that existed were that there were some neighbors who were concerned about behavior to the point where they were, some of the conversations were not productive, and then we started to see a decrease in the number of volunteers we were getting, so. What I did with the program was, we had my student workers to actually take over that role through a really informed way that they communicate with students, so that was the way that we transitioned. I don't have those student workers anymore. Now we're at a point where, so, the state police and I both develop a a list from the prior year based on areas that were impacted with negative behavior, make a list of those and, and do the approach with all of those properties first.
So maybe we should, we should undo this one, say, I'm going with modifications.
Yep.
And get rid of the campus community partnership, and just say, UConn is Mansfield resident state troopers as the people who are responsible.
Okay, that's for somebody that's not letting you type in there, but, so it's, repeat one more time, modify.
Modified. The, the approach has changed, the approach to addressing and engaging with students off-campus has changed. However, an effective method has been developed by the Dean of Students' Office, the State Police, and the Building and Housing Inspection Office.
Can I object to that, I don't think you want to take this people of the community out of that committee.
There isn't a committee anymore.
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to keep them, you were talking about making it just the university and the police who are going to talk to the students.
Well, I think what has happened is that John has issued a call for people to come, and nobody has showed up for years.
Right, that was back in, so Laura, that was back in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we saw a decline in vol, people volunteering for this program. And it was after work, we saw a significant decline in that, and then just pivoted and made a decision to do some things in a different way, so we were able to engage with students in a really intentional way. I mean, my office alone with ten students was engaging with up to three thousand students in the course of two months.
Not to say anything negative, but the, the state troopers do not have a really friendly relationship with the students, let's put it that way.
I respectfully disagree, they are.
They may try, but they, I don't think their behavior rights, their perception of other students.
Laura, there are two different groups of state troopers. There are, are resident state troopers who are very carefully chosen and trained in community policing and in dealing with students, and then there, when they are not available, we get the state police from, from the troop. And those folks may not have had that kind of training, and there, that's where you find the less friendly interactions. On the other hand, you know, there are times when they have to issue nuisance ordinances, and students may not perceive that as friendly.
We don't have the state police here representing themselves, I don't think it's fair to draw any conclusions on Troops C or our resident troopers without representation.
I will say that the, I will say that the we, I have held a number of on-campus meetings with students that we've identified as with concerning behavior, and the state police have been at every one of those meetings, and have engaged in the conversation and dialogue much the same way we do with all of our students.
It seems illogical for it not to have any of the community members involved, though. I mean, the students aren't necessarily bad neighbors, just the communication between the people of the town and the students.
Yeah, some of the.
What I would suggest is that when John does this, he asks this committee to come forward. I have gone along on some of these visits back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, eleven, somewhere in that, in that period. I found it interesting, I enjoyed doing it, but the fact of the matter is that it's been very, it's been very hard to get even neighbors to do this, people tell me they are afraid of students, and they're afraid to talk to them, and oh my God, what would happen if, if, if they got mad at me? Well, so I.
That's irrational.
I will add one more thing, and that is that, you know, we, I even addressed with students that when they say, well, I'm communicating with my neighbors, I'm talking with my neighbors, they have my cell phone, I have theirs, what we were discovering was that students, some students, not all, were asking neighbors to call them before they called the police, and to be honest, if someone's being disrupted or disturbed, the police should be called, and the reality is, they shouldn't have to rely on a neighbor having to be the person to say, please turn it down five to six times. They should rely on the state police who will engage, talk with the students, disperse a large crowd, and issue tickets if necessary.
Can I say one thing, I think we don't have to mandate this as a town for neighbors to get to know their neighbors, I think this is a pro grammatical thing, and I, you know, so I think certainly in my department, when we get a complaint, we always say, have you talked to your neighbor? This is not necessarily about a student housing complaint, but, you know, a rooster, a fence, or, or whatever, loud noises, but, you know, if it's, obviously, people have a choice if they go to the police or, but we always encourage people to talk with their neighbor. Do, I mean, I don't know if we need to put it in the plan, so, but I, I said perhaps consider encouraging members of the community.
There, I would be, I would be satisfied with that, but I think you should not eliminate the people from the community.
Well, two things, I think the pandemic really made it difficult for community members to reach out to strangers. Laura, if you would like to work with this committee and try to find another way to re-engage volunteers in this, we can do that.
I would, I'm happy to do that.
It's also about capacity, so there, we, we have, we went from a, a one-full program to me. And so, you know, it's talking about capacity of being able to organize an event like that could be challenging, but I'm not without, not withholding, I would not, I would look at that program once again if we could, and to see what we could do and how we could engage with it. Effectively, what we do is we gauge each academic year based on where we're seeing these issues, identify where the problems are coming from and who they are, and focus on those individuals, which is what we're doing this year, so.
I don't see a problem with the students in my area, they're perfectly fine, they just are too many people in one house, and that's not safe for them or us.
To be honest, Laura, we're looking, we think about like, across the Mansfield, there are seven hundred plus single-family rentals condos. The reality is, the number of single families where we see issues is maybe twenty-five. So in terms of, when we're seeing the number of students that may be living in, not all of them are living in these single-family rentals, and the number of issues we're seeing are minimal compared to the number of students living, that would be living in, both in Mansfield, Wellington, and beyond, so minimal issues.
Okay, so do I keep this last section, or, I, I mean, I, or, or just delete it, I just need a consensus from the group so that I can accurately.
I think this needs to continue, this program needs to continue, it just, I, I like the modify. Approach has changed, however, an effective method has been established, now the Department of Building and Housing, State Police, and UConn Dean of Students' Office, perhaps consider encouraging members of the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
This is not perfectly written, by the way, but we'll fix it.
No, that's fine, I think that's perfect.
Okay.
We just need to remain, we'll remove the Mansfield Community Campus Partnership from the.
Yeah, if I could delete this, I would, but. Oh, I did, okay. So, explore the possibility of requiring students to live on campus through their sophomore year. What is the current status of that?
Well, I think it needs to be deleted. But I think it also relates to some of the other things we've talked about here, so I'm not, I guess that's why I'm saying delete it.
Are they, do they live through the freshman year?
They do.
Freshman is required, yeah.
Yeah.
Most of our sophomores live on campus anyways.
Yeah, I would encourage them to stay, I mean, they don't have a sense of community if they don't stay on campus, at least some of the time that they're students.
Yeah, organically, Laura, in, to the committee, it's already happening, so the majority of our sophomores are living on campus. And when students start to decide to move off campus is in the fall semester of their sophomore year, and then committing to move off in their, in the spring semester right now. And most of the students that I'm engaging with are sophomores or juniors.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say modify, I would take it back and say students now required to spend freshman year. Most stay through sophomore year, and just let it, let that go, I don't think the town needs to take any action on this.
We can just eliminate that.
Yeah, I agree, it should be eliminated.
Or how about we say completed? Like, or abandoned?
We're not, we're not requiring them, so it's, well, possibly, you know, we're not going to require them, so that's not something that's completed.
Oh, okay, so students are not required at freshman year to live on campus?
They're not required in their sophomore, this is, this bullet says through sophomore year.
Okay.
So we're, we're not, we've not required them in their sophomore year, nor are we at a place to have that discussion, so I would say delete it. And it's already happening, organically, where sophomores are already living, most of them are living on campus.
In other words, this is a moot point.
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, okay.
Let's move on to something that's not moot.
Okay, encourage the development of additional student housing at the UConn Depot Campus.
Abandoned, abandoned, yeah.
Okay. See here. Revise the definition of family to allow more than three unrelated persons to live in apartments.
Yes, we should do that.
Yes, I agree. The students travel in pairs, they don't travel in three, so the, the challenge with this.
Very unhappy with this, because they have built three.
I know, but they still have the ability in in those apartments to double up some of the single, single rooms, so they could, still could do four.
Well, we're seeing revised.
We're seeing eight kids and ten kids in one house, let's get real about this, we're not talking about six, we're talking about eight to ten kids in one house.
Where?
About apartments now, not houses.
I'm talking about single housing.
Laura, Laura, wait a second, wait a minute, I'm chair.
Okay.
Laura, where are you seeing ten kids in houses?
On my street, quite often. There, there at least, there are six to seven cars in front of each house every day, which doesn't mean seven. There, there at least, um, there are six to seven cars in front of each house every day, which doesn't mean seven people. It means they're car sharing.
So a single-family rental with, you know, this is out of my league, but a single-family rental that can house four can have up to two visitors, which means there could be six vehicles in the driveway. I see Jennifer shaking her head. So, and then a, a, a house with three could have five vehicles in the, in in their part, and they have designated parking spaces, so doesn't mean they're living there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But right now, we're discussing apartments.
Right, we're not talking about single families, so we, we, that's something, I, I just want to take a pulse of this community that in managed apartment complexes, do you think this is something that we should con- um, continue, continue and, and study?
If you say, if your idea is, if you think yes, raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you're pretty, Sean?
I didn't, we didn't hear from Brian.
Uh, you have to be careful with this one. I mean, if you allow for an apartment, uh, you could open up a can of worms for uh, owners of single-family houses, uh, wanting the same. Again, it goes back to fair housing. Um, you have to be careful, uh, as, as a government, how you define family and I'd be cautious about this.
I, I would like to say something about this as well, and the, the reality is, I know that we moved to this, the, the town of Mansfield, and there was a quality of life committee that moved to this, this three versus four unrelated. To be honest, what it has done in essence is for landlords that are required to have three, in, and I hear this from the housing code enforcement all the time, is that landlords have found ways around this and housed four anyways. To be honest, our, our students travel in pairs, they, they do not travel in threes, it means there's always one person out. I would be in favor of looking at removing that three altogether and making it just four. It's so much easier. Because on our off-campus housing website, constantly, um, I'm communicating with the Mansfield Building Housing Office saying, this house should have three, they're listing as four. And it's really apples and oranges. To four people in a single-family home, when there are so many single-family rentals that already have four, I don't think one more person's gonna make a difference.
All due respect, this probably would be a town decision, uh, zoning, uh, decision, not one that the university uh, should be making on behalf of the town of Mansfield.
Right, this would be something this committee would recommend to the town council.
Right, and this decision was made with the uni- in conjunction with the university, um, through the Quality of Life Committee back in twenty-ten.
So just, I just want to clarify, because I've been thinking about this, and I know Paul and I have been talking about this, but Bri- Brian's correct in that this probably can't be accomplished through the changing the definition of family, because you can't, the definition of family would apply across, it's the definition of family's definition, so we'd have to come up with a how you do this would take some legal study, um, so it doesn't relate to the definition of family, but can I just get some clarif- clarification? Um, if, if someone, do we want to increase occupancy and manage apartments and, and evaluate allowing four people to live in single-family homes? However, whatever legal mechanism that ha- it has to be legal. I don't know how the mechanism, we'd have to discuss with, that with Kevin and study that a little bit. Does that make sense, or?
I have to do that. Have it, have it studied legally? We don't want to get ourselves into trouble.
Well, this is not a legal document, so, um, Jennifer, quick question. Can you distinguish between managed apartment complexes and single-family residences?
No, but you, what you would do is you allow someone to um, apply for that, like group dwelling designation. So like in certain zones, you could apply for, to be a group dwelling. We'd have to look at that, and then you, you know, obviously, we, we don't want to give this away. We, we only want to do this if it's, if people are parking orderly, they're maintaining their property, they're, you know, managing the people who are living in their property. So it has to be, it's not just an, an easy thing to do, but I think it's an important thing to do. But it's not like you just quickly do a zone change, or it's just, there's, it's why, it's why we've been struggling with this for so long.
Well, I would put explore mechanisms to increase.
I think the issue is really not about single-family dwelling, as it is having affordable housing for students to live elsewhere, because they all say they're doing it because it's cheaper. That's the definition of each one of them. I'm doing it because it's so much less expensive.
And Laura, to that point, uh, four people in a, in one house that could be four thousand dollars a month would reduce costs. So if you had four versus three, each student's paying around a thousand dollars versus more than that. So when you reduce the number of people in a joint and several lease, you're also increasing the amount each individual will pay for that rental.
Yeah, it's, it's something that definitely, I, I've, I think about this a lot. Um, and it's just something that it, I think has to just be looked at and, and studied, and we have to come up with a, with a plan.
One other comment on that, um, is if we increased the housing at up to twenty-five percent, um, because if you go from three to four, I believe that's a twenty-five percent increase, um, you're increasing traffic by that and these traffic studies and uh, everything, the zoning and everything that was considered um, at a lesser rate, occupant rate. Um, now we're gonna be adding twenty-five percent more cars and traffic. Um, that's something that should really be taken into consideration. It's.
They're already for, or up to ten.
So I, I think like we could go.
I think leave it at three.
Ryan and I were actually just discussing this um, in a meeting, and we, like, there's so many things to consider here. It's just something that has to be thoughtfully looked at, in my opinion. Um, so I think that's where we wanna, um, that's what we, we need to do for the plan. And whatever, this, this group has to be part of that thoughtful exploration, in my opinion.
I think you need to add the town council and this group to the people who do this.
Yeah.
And can I ask again, you said if you're, if it says three unrelated persons, the assumption is there are five people living in the house?
No.
Three.
But you can have, you, there are five cars.
Visitors, two visitor spots, three renters. And.
At any one time, but not necessarily dwelling there, just at any time, there could be up to five people.
Correct, four, five vehicles, five people, correct.
Something about the number of bathrooms in each house that can accommodate the number of students who are there. That's a sanitary issue, but that's a different thing altogether.
And, and Laura, there's, there are also a number of single-family rentals that were grandfathered in as four. So there are already existing a, a high number of single families that were grandfathered in as four prior to twenty-ten. Anything after twenty-ten was, uh, became a three unrelated rent, rental.
Okay, I think it's a better number to keep with.
But you can have three couples who are married in the three limit.
No. So you had, that's a whole different thing. I could, I have to pull out our definition of family, which is a page long, and it's very, um, if there, if the three couples are, were living in a household as a quote-unquote functional family per the definition, then they could qualify. But i- it, then, even then, it's.
But if, if you have unrelated, if you have a, a mother and a son, that's one, one group. So let's say you had three mothers and three sons with three unrelated, that you had three unrelated groups. That would have to be a family in order to be legal?
I'd have to pull up the definition, which I can, but I think we would get, we'd get, go down the rabbit hole.
Right, okay.
And then all bets are off, if it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, is if this is a owner-occupied rental. If it's owner-occupied.
But the definition of family still applies, no matter if it's a rental or not. So the def- so it's, it's, we're, the, the housing code refers back to this definition of family, which is a zoning issue. Housing is, housing codes, um, enforced by the Department of Building and Housing, but they refer back to the the definition of family in the zoning regulations. So, yeah, so I'd love to, I think we need to have more conversations about this.
Let me remind everybody that we have done one chapter and we have three more to go.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, this, this chapter seven, we could, is a lot of what your work is, I think, so it's maybe we need to go back and revisit this more and more when the new plan's done.
So can you increase the print size again?
Sure. So this this goal is Mansfield has maintained low-density rural character in the majority of the town while accommodating growth in walkable mixed-use centers, uh, compact residential and institutional areas. So what, when we think about our smart growth areas, the way we've defined them in our P O C D, those are the areas, um, Four Corners, Stores, uh, Center, or downtown stores, um, King Hill Road, the mall, and then we have other, like, smaller nodes, like Perkins Corner. So when we've talked about adding density, that's where we've zoned it for higher density. Um, so that's just sort of a, a kind of a primer, and, and the reason why we've zoned those areas with higher density is they have access to public water in sewer, they have, they're on, um, Collector or Arterio Roads, main, main roads. They have more infrastructure for walkability and bikeability, so that's sort of what we've done. So the first action is focused efforts to expand off-camp, campus undergraduate housing in mixed-use center locations and in compact residential areas that are close to UConn's core campus.
I would say that's been achieved.
Uh, well.
It's ongoing.
I think it's ongoing, myself.
Well, the fo- focusing the efforts has been achieved. The achievement of the efforts is ongoing, but we are, we have certainly achieved focusing our efforts.
You're right, you're right. We have achieved focus in the efforts, yeah.
I'd also like to highlight that we, it, the focus is on undergraduate students when the majority, actually, m- most of our graduate students live off-campus.
Yes.
So that would, that, if we could make an adjustment to that, when we look at the totality of all of our off-campus and commuter students, graduate students make up a large population of that.
Just change it to students, take off undergraduate.
Or add and graduate, one or the other.
Or, uh, maybe just off-campus, to expand off-campus housing efforts for UConn students.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Which is, well, I'm not gonna, this is a slippery slope, but we're not designing housing off-campus for students. We're designing, uh, multifamily apartment complexes for anyone.
It's expand off-campus housing options, how about that? Cause, uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we even need to put students in there, to be honest, because we, if we're saying we're expanding it for them to live in, i- it's focusing on, that's where we want our, that's where we think all students will be living, and the reality is, anyone can live in any of these apartment complexes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um.
Yeah, I would think just off-campus housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the university has no interest in, in, um, building housing on campus, say. The university's more interested in off-campus housing and apartment complexes to accommodate the students. Is that correct?
No. I think we still have interest in, if I understand your question correctly, we have interest in developing on-campus housing as well. Um, but we also recognize that, you know, the town's gone in the direction of approving off-campus apartments, and that served both the university and the town law.
Okay, that's so long as the populace is in agreement with that. If there's somewhere along the line, uh, people aren't so interested in big apartment complexes, uh, and, you know, we all were elected, most of us are elected officials here. Uh, and we have constituent that we have to answer to, so.
So Brian, if they don't like what we're doing, they vote us out of office.
Well, first of all, this, this.
It could, uh, what I'm saying is it can change. They could vote us out of office for what we're doing. Uh, things could change.
And this plan right now is just a recommendation. Um, you haven't adopted it. You, you're gonna get public comment on this, you're, there's gonna be public hearings, so you may hear that this is a really great idea or a bad idea, and then you can make your decision after this, but you're, I mean, like, right now.
Just as long as we have public input, that's all.
Yeah, definitely. That's totally what this is all about.
Now, the next one is a really different subject. It has to do with UConn-owned properties or state-owned properties that are next to town land. Next to, next to Mansfield land. It's not town land, it's all privately owned, but, um, is this something which this group wishes to continue to do, John?
My, my question is just, I was looking at, I didn't read all of two, and my apologies, but the, there's a bold section and an unbolded section, and it reads undergraduate student housing can have greater impacts on neighborhoods than rental housing occupied by families. I don't understand what that is.
Yeah, I think.
Is that undergraduate student housing is on-campus housing? Anything off-campus would not be anything to be considered student housing.
Yeah, I think this needs to be reworded. I think it's problematic, but I think what we're, I, I think what we're saying is there needs to be, um, when we're, when we're doing like more dense, um, housing that is attractive to students, it should be located in our mixed-use centers and compact residential areas, right? Is that, do we all agree with that?
Let, let's talk a little bit about context. When this thing was wr- written, people were up in arms about the number of residential houses which were turning into student housing and, and affecting the quality of life of neighborhoods, and people were really angry about parties and about badly maintained buildings and this, this, all of this really shows some of that anger. Since then, we have developed the multifamily housing that is, um, that is close to campus, it's in concise areas, um, that's not the right word, but it can concentrated areas, and the hope is that those developments will relieve some of the pressure on the neighborhoods. And even the people who are very angry about students living in town have as a rule not opposed these developments. I mean, they happen to oppose the idea of them. As they are being built, people are somewhat horrified that there are big buildings in Mansfield, but, um, nonetheless, I think that the, the idea of moving students into larger developments off-campus, close to campus has superseded the whole emotional context that this brought, this document was written in.
And it, can we remove that second, that second unbolded section? I don't agree with many points in that.
Yeah.
Because in, in one breath, we're saying, um, we're not gonna stop the growth or the spread of single-family rentals, and in that sentence, it says we're discouraging students to live in them or be near their, those areas, were impacts on single-family homes. So the way to do that is to stop the conversion, to re- to reduce or eliminate the number of conversions that we're seeing. Not to say students should be living there, because majority of our students off-campus are very good neighbor citizens and representatives of UConn.
All right, ready to move on?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay.
So I would like to ask Sean about three. Because Sean knows more about UConn's planning and development. What do you think is possible within this idea of collaboration on development of key university properties?
I think that that can stay ongoing.
So is, are you guys willing to talk with us? We need to add, um, Mansfield apartment area there. Oh, Mansfield Apartments is there.
It's on there.
It's on there. So how, and Jennifer, let me ask you this. How would we collaborate on development with the university?
Um, Well, I think when, when, and Sean was directly involved this, but the, when we, when the university did their master plan, the town had a role in, in providing advice, just as UConn, you know, you all, the council and the P Z C are the ones that are gonna adopt this plan, but we're here with UConn officials to get their advisory opinion, right? But ultimately, this is a town document, but that's what, the role that we played with UConn, right? Am I wrong, right?
No, that's exactly what I had in mind, the steering committee for the master plan, hundred percent correct. The only, the only thing I.
The only, the only thing I need some clarity on is four corners is listed there. So, but it's, but it's it's key university properties is the subject. So what did you all have in mind by keeping four corners on the list?
Well, four court, that would be the J. E. Shepherd and the Discovery Drive, right?
Is that, that's what I'm asking. Is that?
Yeah, I think so.
You consider that four corners?
Yeah, I, I would.
Okay.
All right. I'll let people read the next one and we can talk about it.
You know, people have said to me over time, Yukon keeps buying up more and more university town land. And with, with the exception of the one purchase at four corners, I don't see this happening.
Me either.
So can you just say here that this is achieved?
Well, I think with their, so the, I mean, Yukon owns a lot of agricultural land. So like, for example, like Horse Barn Hill, I think that was sort of so. The, the goal for this one was that to keep the more dense development in the campus core. That's what I think people were trying to get at with this goal. So.
That's a roundabout ways to say, don't develop horse burn hill.
Yeah. I, that's, they have other, Yukon has a lot of other agricultural property besides horse burn hill. They have the Spring Manor Farm. They've got the stuff all the way down in, um, in Spring Hill. They've got North Eagleville Track, which is a I, I mean, it's a forested but agricultural resource, so. Do we want to just say continue?
I mean, what I, what I, what I get out of that is about discouraging sprawl.
Yeah.
And the ma, and the master plan, which is still valid as a twenty year plan, was entirely inward focused. It's not proposing anything outside of its boundaries. With the one exception, I guess, we could argue whether that's an, an extension of the tech park or not, but um, I think it's, I think it's fine, as long as we all agree what it really means.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and thank you for having me. I was traveling in the last meeting and had a conflict, so glad to be here. Sorry to be so late to this conversation. Um, this one confused me in, in reading it. I had a hard time following where the, the thrust of this. And I, for me, I mean, I know maybe for you, um, maybe for others, all these words are transparent, but the word development even to me can mean several things, right? Because one could theoretically develop parkland. All right. I mean, like, I don't, I don't, if we mean buildings, I think we should say so. Like, do we mean constructed things as opposed to putting in a peace garden? Like, those are very different kinds of things, right? And so I, I think I would want more granularity here about what non-agricultural is, what development is, and maybe flip the sentence around a little, um, to make.
Yeah.
I like the idea of discouraging sprawl as, as wording.
Yeah, I, I wanna work, I wanna think about that, um, just because I, I definitely think I think I understand what the message is. I think, but I think like I'm a planner, so I think, and sometimes we get a little wonky here, but um, so I think it needs to be clear and so that everyone else understands what's happening. And also I was involved with this plan back in two thousand fifteen. So it's just, we need to make it clear, discourage sprawl. Is that? But we need to continue it. Is that what I'm hearing?
I see. Let's move on to the next one.
So that is really similar to this one that.
I would say continue.
Yeah.
And I think you need to put this committee, uh, and the town council into these, um, at least this committee, because I mean, some of, some of this is staff to staff. And maybe, but some of the staff is town council staff.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's, I think it's really all encompassing. You know, with these two, anything of consequence related to new development has a public process for us by way of CIPA. And that engages the, all of, we've been several departments at town hall, as well as other state agencies and the general public by way of a, a meeting. So I.
And generally what we do, when there is a CIPA, we get, um, a notice of an environmental impact evaluation. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviews it. Um, and they, then they forward the comments to the town council, and then the mayor and the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission submit comments that have been approved by the board, the, the commission and the council. Yeah.
Number three, we can eliminate because that never happened.
Okay.
Abandon.
Yeah.
What about this one?
Four, I won't comment on because I'm on Eastwood Road.
I mean, I, you can continue to leave it in there as, as continue to discourage. You know, it's not, it's not on our near term plan. It is in the master plan. We've studied it. We know what the impacts could be if we were ever to prioritize that connector and, and it will go through due process when and if that ever becomes a project.
Okay, next.
What about this biosafety levels?
So Sean, do you, can you speak to this a little bit?
Not intelligently.
I know.
Um, but I, I think it has something to do, well, one component of it might be animal testing. But that, that's out of my, out of my hula hoop, really.
I don't think we should limit Yukon. Uh, I mean, if they get some huge grant to do level four, we should say, go for it.
Do you know about these levels, um, Paul, because?
I have, I've actually been to level five at the CDC in Atlanta, and we, we definitely do not want level five. But level four, I think we could handle level four. Level five has those diseases which are supposedly extinct. But if they escape, you know, they start up again.
I, I don't know what these levels are or what they mean. Um, I, I really can't comment on that.
Could we generalize this goal, like to, to make it so where it's not so specific to these biosafety one, two, and three, but we, I mean, we just want safe.
Yeah, that's what we want. We want it to be safe. Yeah.
Well, I think there was, at the time, there was a very specific concern about a, about, uh, developing uh, incubators in particular that might, um, that might encourage the, the use of more controversial or difficult or dangerous laboratory work. And, and people, you know, this, this one rings of a particular person or group, a small group of people having their say at a meeting.
Yep.
And I'm not saying they're wrong. Uh, I, but.
I don't know. Safety and um, and appropriate context. Neighborhood impacts.
I think we could just take that out completely.
Okay. Well, what, what do people think?
Well, if you're right, it's that level five could be a danger to the community, maybe we should leave it in there. I mean, or.
There's only one level five in the entire country, so.
What is level four? What is level four?
I don't know.
I, I would have to review this before I could comment that. And, 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 um, the safety of the public and the residents is of the utmost importance. I believe that's why it's here. I think this should be reviewed at a later time. I don't think we should abandon it if people were concerned. I, I think we have to safeguard the public.
So if continue perhaps generalized to encourage public safety and appropriate context, neighborhood impacts, et cetera. Does that capture what you're saying, Brian, or no?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay. Next. Good bless someone.
Uh, Jen, to what extent are we in, is the town engaged currently in plans for university expansion? What does expansion mean, by the way, in this context? Does it mean lands? Does it mean buildings? Does it mean students? Does it mean camp, other campuses?
I think that, um, I, I think it's intentionally broad. Um, you know, for example, the, the letter that just thinking the enrollment letter that I think surprised everyone. Um, so maybe it means like having and having a seat at the table with the legislature when they're making decisions about in, you know, changes to Yukon. And does that make, what do you think?
I'll, I'll hop in. Yeah, I mean, I, I I agree that the word expansion has about as wide a range of interpretations as possible. I do think that probably intentional. Um, I, I to, to the point Jen was kind of making, you know, we're just trying to, I think, capture whenever Yukon grows, whatever way that growth kind of manifests itself, um, you know, we want to make sure that there's due attention paid to like the local implications of that, right? The sort of the spillover effects and that interplay. And I think Jen raises a great point. You know, when the state legislative leadership, uh, Senate legislative leadership, um, you know, issued that letter, it was kind of like seemingly done in a vacuum, you know, without really thinking about, you know, if, if that, uh, if that enrollment goal, which obviously was not just the stores campus, but if it came to fruition, clearly that was gonna mean you know, a lot more students on the stores campus as well as the, the regional campuses, you know, what, what the effects would be on housing and public safety and all those things. So we just want to make sure that we're seated at the table and we're always, always talking.
Attention. Yeah, I think like, even, like, what would happen if Yukon decided to drastically decrease its enrollment? That would be also something we want to.
Yeah, if Yukon, I guess, right, I mean, we're gonna go hundred percent virtual, you know.
Or move half the student body to Hartford and Stanford.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of things that could happen. I think we just, it, we're so tied together that I think what, what we've could advocate for is a seat at the table at, maybe at the legislative level.
I can go back on that biosafety. I've said, Sean was so nice to post that uh, information. What is the highest level biosafety that Yukon is, uh, at now?
Could not say. We have, that'd be a question for our E H and S folks.
Okay.
They have a whole biosafety department. I could find out.
That'd be great. Where do we go now? What's the next one?
So for the, just for clarification, the one we just left, um, do we want to reward it so it's specific to, Nathan had to leave for three. He's gonna try to rejoin if we're still on the line. John, would you all be comfortable clarifying that to, to say for, um, changes in university enrollment? So the word expansion isn't.
I think enrollment makes much, much more sense, and that could be enrollment for our undergraduate or graduate students. And we, the discussion for increased enrollment has occurred. Please keep in mind that is for all campuses. So if we talk about increased enrollment, it would not have the, the entirety of the impacts would not be felt on the stores campus. It would be across all of our campuses. And, um, so that, just, I will say that at this point, but I prefer to Nathan to have that discussion. But it would, it would specifically speak to enrollment, not expansion of the physical campus.
I, I was, this is Susiana. I was going to suggest a similar thing. I, I feel like there are two or three we've already discussed that talk about the physical development expansion and that that gets redundant and that this should be narrowly focused on enrollment. Because plenty, plenty of other things that talk about buildings and spaces and.
Yeah, I agree.
Number two could be continue as well.
Right. We've already got that. Now, number seven, uh, conservation and or preservation is part of its planning process. Sean, please help us tell us where we are with, with this.
Yeah, so we discussed this, I think, in our last meeting. Might be that reference goal, three point one strategy B. I'm not sure, but it could be. Um, so I did speak with, uh, with, uh, Yukon forestry and, uh, the professor who's chairing the, the, the steering committee for the new strategic plan for forest and agricultural land for the college. I think someone asked if there'd be an ability for someone from the town to be represented as part of that process. He did say yes. It's not at this time because, like I said at the last last meeting, we've only had one meeting so far, but he imagines that there'll be um, various touch points throughout the process and welcomes, welcomes a representative from the town to be involved, or maybe more than one. We also talked about, uh, Spring Manor Farm and specifically conservation or preservation out there. I, we still are looking into some of the things that I found on that property. The biggest thing is something that deep classifies as their own property, which overlays our property. And I, I, and I don't know, it might be a rabbit hole. It might just be the way they named the, the G I S data as being deep property, but there's a significant portion in the deep property map, um, that's on our property that they're claiming to be their property for water access to the Willamette River. Outside of that, we obviously have Oxford Protection associated with the wells and agricultural soils that are valuable. So I, I think I would keep this as, as ongoing for now.
Um, I, we're just about, I'm gonna make an announcement about the Northwest Mansfield Vision and Strategy Plan at the end of this meeting, but, um, one of the things that focused in was a ask there is also to, to add the North Eagleville tract to this list. So I think, um, would people be opening, open to this?
Where, what is the North Eagleville tract?
The North Eagle tract of land is, um, immediately adjacent to Shelter Falls Park and it's, um, it's to the west of, um, Northwood Apartments. So it's a tract of land that, um, it fronts on Bone Mill Road, North Eagleville Road. Um, that area. It's, it's a forest, it's a managed forest, forested area. Just like.
I'd be okay with that as long, because it does say areas. It doesn't mean to suggest whole parcels. So if you're gonna expand it to encompass woodland or forested land, or, or I guess we call it managed forest, um, that'd be okay, as long as we all recognize that doesn't necessarily mean an entire tract. It could be a subset thereof.
Okay. All right. Are we, let's see, let's save this and we're gonna go to chapter nine. We're good with that?
Move on.
Let's move on. All right. Um, so we have, Mansfield has a balanced, integrated transportation system that provides residents with the viable options from getting to one place from the other. And then, um, so.
Well, we have, we have received, begun progress on the South Eagleville um, traffic calming, um, changes. You know, with the, clearly there's going to be something going on there. And North Eagleville, they, they have also done tra, the university has done traffic calming efforts. So I would say that, that some of this has been achieved.
How about made progress but should continue? I think it's gonna be sort of an ongoing, yeah, so. Yeah, okay.
Could, we call it in progress rather than made? Could we call it in progress rather than made? I just, I feel like we're early stages on, on some of these.
Yeah, no, it is in progress. Yep, for sure. That's the way it's quoting, but my dropdown, for some reason, I don't know how to use it effectively. So, um, okay. So, um, integrated network of sidewalks, bike ways and trail uh, that connect residents with key community facilities. I think I think we've done a great job with this. I think we're almost done. We're, we're almost there. It's just with the funding, it just has to be built. Um, so I think it's ongoing and I think we'll have to look at other areas as that comes up. If, do folks agree with me?
Yes, and we have part of the money for the 195 trail. We, we've done trails that connect loops around Yukon. So evaluate and seek funding. That's our real problem.
So it's ongoing.
Well, it does imply that we're asking Yukon to assist in this. Yukon has been supportive, you know, with letters of support and so on, but we haven't actually had um, direct contribution toward developing trails and transportation.
I think we're talking about also multimodal. So we're going to have to, I think, um, I, I think ongoing continues to evaluate and seek funding and collaborate with Yukon?
Yes. And, and WRTD.
And eastern for the southern part of town.
Because now that WRTD is managing the buses for Yukon, they have a much larger role um, than they did originally.
All right. Explore options to maintain and expand coverage of WRTD and Yukon bus system.
It's ongoing.
I think it's the same thing as this one. All right. Remote greater interconnection of existing transit systems, particularly between connections to.
Well, there is now a bus to Hartford.
Right. And I think, I think we need to continue to do it that and make it better, right? So it's not, doesn't take an hour to get to Hartford. Maybe it's a little less.
Yeah, it has multiple stops. Um, it goes from Buckland Hills Mall to the Tolan parking ride to stores. It takes about a full hour to get here. It is widely used by students. I will say that. And the U pass, if there's anything we can add to here, the U pass has been a great addition for students, though Uniclin pays into the U pass system and students get that pass for free each semester. I don't know if that was, I don't think that was actually a thing. No, it was not a thing at that point. So that's been an addition to the transportation to and from Hartford.
Okay. I think we're getting there, guys. Okay. Explore, explore alternatives to traditional public transit to expand. Okay, I'm not going to read these for you because I know you guys can read.
Brad, were we approached by somebody who wanted to do minivans or something?
Um, yeah, we did. There was a, a tickler that went out, micro transit, um, I'll have to resurface that in our email. But yeah, there, there was something recently.
Do you know that, um, in, I remember when we were writing this plan in like 2012 and 13, they never thought Uber would come to Mansfield. So, um, continue and modernize this goal.
Additionally, there are two properties now that have, uh, Meadowbrook is one that has adopted their own shuttle service. So they've they have their own shuttle service that goes to and from their property. As well as the den at Cedar Ridge. That's Wellington. So not less of an issue, but.
Right. And so do we want to encourage, um, um, private apartment shuttles? Or no?
There's a lot of liability for them to do that. And my concern is, is that they start to add that onto their expenses. They don't seem to see, they don't see the demand in filling some of their beds. This may be a challenge for them. So, um, I, my preference would be to look at expanding the current WRTD options. Possibly to a smaller shuttle service, like an airport shuttle that may be able to navigate some of the smaller roads that go a little bit further.
Did we have the vault senior center volunteer driver program when this was put together?
I know. I, well, I actually, I don't know. I think it's called micro mobility, but this is a little bit out of my.
Yeah, um, I'm glad so that Michael's come up twice now. I think that I can't see below number four, but if it continues to be just about transit, I'd propose or suggest the title be changed from transportation to transit. Because transit, uh, transportation relates to when I see alternative transportation, I immediately go to like micro mobility and other forms of transportation other than transit. But this, all four of those are very transit centered. That makes sense.
What's the difference, John? I don't know what the diff, what the meaning is.
It could be active transportation. It could be bikes. It could be, it could be scooters on the micro mobility side, e-bikes.
So, yeah. I think you're, you're right. From a planning point, that's definitely it. Just, just so you know, when we did our survey, no one knew it tran, like when I gave this to Jessica, um, St. Louis, our human services and someone else, they're like, they didn't, we didn't, they weren't familiar with transit. So we did call it transportation. So just for the layperson, but we will call it transit in the plan. I think that's appropriate. What about this one right here?
Your downtown partnership worked with Yukon to get, uh, buses to court for games to bring people from the parking garage to gamble. So that, I don't know whether it's still ongoing or whether it will be revived, but it was very popular when it was running.
Ah, gosh, I gotta I think, don't, it was called Husky Express or something like that. I I don't think it exists anymore, but we should, I'll check. I'll make sure.
Yeah. It took people to organize it. And I think, um, partnership staff ran out of space. Ran out of mental space.
Um, I, so for encouraging this, um, ongoing, I mean, I think something we want to encourage, right?
Yeah. But I, you know, we need to, I think we need to say we've achieved some, you know, that there have been some achievements.
This, um, Susanna, don't worry. This is all notes. I, this is not how it's going to be written. Um, or everyone, but I know Susanna, you were looking, you were looking at that. So don't mean to call you out specifically, but sounds like you're a good editor. All right. What about this next one?
What happened with that corridor study? That it, it produced something and nothing really came of it, as I recall.
Um, well, at the advisory committee meeting on, ad hoc committee meeting on Thursday, we can, um, ask about that. But yeah, we should, um, I mean, okay, the overall goal of this is important. Um, so just, should it be ongoing? And then we need to look at that specific plan further?
I, I don't think anything came of that plan, except perhaps the Fort Town Collaborative that turned into Connecticut countryside, but ultimately had nothing to do with transportation.
And how about, how about continue, but remove the specific example?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I just wanted, I'm just reading this bullet. I got called away for something. Um, it says, support regional efforts to address traffic impacts associated with Yukon's expansion. Forty-four and 195. The efforts there, aren't they really in line with the expansion of the properties that are being developed there rather than Yukon?
Yeah, I was going to say that, that I would, I would say would traffic impacts associated with population increase and don't necessarily label it as Yukon. I mean.
Right. And it, and new multifamily developments in that, in that area. Ultimately, when the villages open, students will be able to pedestrian travel through the villages over through Close Discovery Drive. So right now is the only time when it will be impacts kind of along that area that are concerning until the villages are built and constructed.
All right. Support wastewater infrastructure practices that protect the town's rural character and direct development to appropriate areas. So um, there, there is a water, a water, there's a water and sewer service. I know there's definitely a sewer service area. Sean, you may need to help me with this. Um, and I know.
This was all written before we did the water and sewer at Four Corners and brought Connecticut water into town?
Yep. So we, so this this goal, we, we have already defined the water and sewer service areas. We have a water pipeline overlay zone. We've done all of that, but I think we probably need to revisit what, where those areas are just to make sure we're, we're comfortable with that and does that?
I, I don't think we want to discourage, uh, water and sewer service forever to every place. I mean, they have to have some flexibility there.
The purpose of this point is to keep Yukon from developing.
Uh, not, no, not just, well, encourage Yukon. Yeah, I guess this is specifically around Yukon, but I, I just think one of the goals is we're going to have to study this, the water and sewer service areas, period. To make sure it's consistent with the growth patterns we want is kind of a, um.
But the basic point of this argument is we don't want them developing, we don't, this, the people who wrote this don't want Yukon to develop Spring Hill or Agronomy Farm by putting in water or sewer.
I, I would just this is Susiana, in case my thing isn't lit for you. Um, this one feels weird to me because it feels like it was written before before the town sort of undertook a big development initiative. It feels, it feels sort of out of date to me to sort of single out Yukon here. It, it seems to me like what we want is Yukon and the town to both be cognizant of the expansion of development that comes with sewer and water and all that comes with that. And that we want both sides sort of constantly cognizant of that and, and how that's changing over time. Um, I don't think it's just a Yukon thing though, right?
Read.
Well, from a town, from a town's person's perspective, Yukon can, Yukon does what it wants. If it wants to have water and sewer, the town has no control over that decision. And, um, although I can't imagine how they would put sewer on Spring Hill, um, without connecting it from, to the town system. But in any case, uh, I think that's unlikely. Um, but what this seems to be addressing is can Yukon build buildings on, uh, on these pieces of property which we, the authors would rather have conserved.
So.
And, and, and there is a sense that the town has no control. If Yukon wants to do something, there's almost no way to stop it.
So I think we've addressed this though i- in another action by encouraging Yukon to look at permanently preserving some of their managed resource areas, right? So do we need to, I mean, I think the town needs, we need to obviously be cognizant of our water sewer service areas and it's going to be a flexible thing. So.
I like the words that you put there.
Here, okay.
And I agree completely with what Susanna said.
Mm-hmm. I do too.
Yeah.
Myself as well. I, I think we should be a little more concise as you reword it. To, to, to speak to, to speak to Tony's point.
I think the whole plan needs to be a little bit more concise, but we're going to get there, I hope.
I think maybe you need to add, um, encourage con, uh, conservation preservation.
Well, we already did that though. That's, this is about kind of infrastructure. So that would be from a different.
Maybe, maybe cross-reference it like you've done with other ones.
Yeah, yeah.
And John, thank you for catching that Yukon mention on the traffic side. I agree with you a hundred percent. I kind of stared away from the screen myself. Jen, when you go to clarify that, I like the word discontent, disconnected or is it, is it in contiguous? Is that a word? Something that's, that further clarifies this outlying term.
So contiguous.
Outlying doesn't, I mean, if if what it really means to oppose is, what it really means to say is something further away from the campus core, even though it's still contiguous land. I think that's what it's trying to say. For me, outline suggests that it's disconnected or dis, or uncontiguous with the.
I think we could just say expand, extension of water services to.
Remote properties.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Uh.
And number two has already been done.
This one?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh. Okay, completed. The town needs to do it.
Oh, yeah. The university's already done it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, to some degree, yes.
So you have the power plant and some of the ball fields, right?
Using the, using the water for irrigation is, is, uh, the irrigation side of it doesn't work for living plants. You know, it's just way too much concentrated salts. And then how do you mitigate that? But the rest of it, I would agree with you, Paul.
Okay.
So initiated, continue to evaluate water reuse options, something like that? Is that we want to?
No, I would agree with Paul that it's done.
Okay.
They've gone about as far as they can go.
Okay. All right. All right.
Just note that not on the irrigation side, but I think that's really doesn't, doesn't matter.
Wait, not on the irrigation or?
No.
Okay.
That's the one thing that wouldn't be done. Even if it could be done, we probably would not do it. We, we generally don't irrigate except for early on in the establishment period.
Okay. I think, I think we're doing this already, but I think it should be ongoing. I mean, Ginny does a lot of this, um.
Ongoing, yep. And number four also ongoing. So are some of those specific things still valid? Repair clinic? Give and go.
Wait, okay, um.
Food scraps.
Or can I just say for, for the work with. Or can I just say for, for the work with organizations, managers, multifamily residential properties, so. I don't know if USG would be the right group, but I know that I could work with the properties pretty closely with Ginny to bring her in. So you could add me into that, and the Mansfield Community Campus Partnership should go away.
Yeah.
So you could say. Probably say Dean of Students' Office.
So, so say, say that again.
You could put, I don't know if you want to name me, but the Dean of Students' Office could assist with this, with that number. One, initially, I'm having trouble reading it. I don't know if USG would have much role in this.
Office of Sustainability, get into any of these activities too, John?
Not with external companies or properties. But that's a great point, Margaret, it would be more. More, more based on communications and bringing in Ginny to talk with the property managers, which I will do.
Okay, is, do we want to do the same thing for this one or? Uh, this, this really is, this is about really. It's a lot of town stuff, but we did call out Yukon for the give and go.
Yep. We have a. We actually have a food pantry on campus now. I don't know if the give and go is even a thing anymore. So we have a, we have an identified food pantry Husky Harvest. That is on campus now, it's really open to anyone, so it's not even open just to students, it's open to anyone who is in need of. Of food. So it has been expanded, yes, to a food pantry.
So what happens when kids move out and there's piles of stuff lying around?
I don't know, Mayor, that's a good question, I'm gonna find out, but I want to make a note because. They used to have the give and go program and I don't know if they're still doing it, while we're in the meeting, I'm gonna write to a colleague right now.
Okay. We're almost there, people. Moving on to chapter ten, let's see how long chapter ten is, not that long. All right. Okay, conduct to fiscal impact notes of the next gen CT. Abandon, right? What do we want to do with this one? Mayor and Ryan?
Well, we have, we have. The creation of this, of this group of ten towns that get a higher pilot because of. Untaxable grand list, state-owned properties. Has brought us some really significant revenue increases, so I would say.
Yeah, so I mean.
But it's almost.
It's always gonna be ongoing.
Yeah.
It's not a one-time thing and. I, I would say ongoing, I would say obviously in the notes. We can certainly comment on the demonstrable significant progress that's been achieved, you know, based on the new formula and we have. We're, you know, we feel good about the future, but. As far as I know, we're still. Not receiving the full statutorily authorized amount, so. I, I would say ongoing and. Because of our unique situation, how critically important this is for us and our. Our budget is a proportion of our overall revenue sources, we really. Shouldn't say anything that suggests we're gonna rest on our laurels, you know?
Next.
The next one, we could, we could talk about trash pickup.
Don't mess with Mansfield.
Yeah.
So ongoing.
Oh, okay, so, and just to back up on the further point, we still do a. Give and go campaign, but it's run out of the Office of Sustainability, so that is still happening.
But does it work for apartments?
Not off campus.
Is that the thrift shop, John? What's the give and go?
Uh, give and go is at the end of the academic year when students move out of the residence halls. There is a collection point for reusable items and the Office of Sustainability is coordinating that for on-campus. There is no identified plan or project for off-campus properties. My former office did do that. Uh, but there was limited interest in, in many of the properties, so.
Given the amount of trash they have outside on those. Those.
I know.
Months, you would think they would be interested.
That's a lot of waste, I know.
All right, let's go down to, to ten-four, number one. And. Um, don't mess with Mansfield is, is one of the, is a really good example. But we also have interns all over the, all over town government from Yukon.
Jen, would you mind scrolling down a little bit?
Sorry, sorry about that.
I don't know if any of the, Sean, would you know if any of? These have been initiated or even conversations had about this with the Office of Sustainability?
I don't, and I was gonna. Add, I guess. For all three. That office, or should I say the institute, the houses, that office is going through a bit of a change right now, so it's actually a good opportunity. To invite new conversations, I think they're. Renaming or maybe not, hasn't been announced yet, but I think internally last week it was. The word energy was added to the institute's title, I think it's the Institute of the Environment and Energy. I don't know what that means going forward in terms of resources and staffing, but. Seems to me on the surface, it presents, presents an opportunity to engage in. These sustainability conversations.
When we, when we took Redenka Mark on the tour of the elementary school. She was apparently very impressed and said she was gonna bring some of those ideas back to Yukon, so we've got. We've got an initial exchange of expertise on this. That would, that would match with, within this, within this. Category.
What is it called, the institute?
I think it's being, if it hasn't happened officially yet, I think it's gonna be Institute of the Envir- of the Environment and Energy. The, the and energy is the new part.
Transition or transformation? Okay. Oh, boy.
And I believe that institute reports to the, directly to the provost's office.
Sean, did you say sustainability? I mean, policy, energy, environment?
No, the Office of Sustainability is within the Institute of the Environment.
Yes.
And then the institute, it is. I was told last week that it's changing its name. To add and energy at the end of its title.
I understood, okay.
But I, but I, I didn't, I think they're still gonna be reporting to the provost's office.
Can I ask a silly question, because I'm not sure about the, the, the. Is that in, there's how many provosts are there? Antaleva is a.
One provosts.
And that's Antaleva.
Yep.
Okay, wasn't sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
And I, I wonder if we should put here under consideration because of all the changes and. This would involve some really intensive conversations with the Vice President for Research. And development to ask if this is something that we could consider, so I wonder at this point under consideration.
But this one, the, the number one or number two? Both?
I would say both. So what do you think?
Well, does it made progress with, don't mess with Mansfield, does that apply here? Okay.
I would say yes.
Okay, and then what about? Under consideration.
I, yeah, I.
Or, it's not been initiated.
Is the Eagleville Brook Project one in the same with the dos- mess with Mansfield? Thing that was done along North Eagleville, is different?
Unrelated, one of, and you know about the water.
Yeah, I got you.
Is a litter cleanup project.
Yeah, didn't we start on North Eagle Road along Eagleville Brook, though? That's what, what confused me.
Yeah, I think the Eagleville Brook Project they're talking about is the TMDL.
Yep, got it.
And the, all the low-impact development. Stuff. So under consideration.
The other thing I would say is that staff-to-staff contacts and student-to-town contacts. Have been effective in both of these areas.
Need, I'd say meetings, right?
Yes.
Who, who chairs the Sustainability Committee for the town?
Lynn Stoddard.
Oh, Lynn does, okay.
All right, so. Almost there.
We, we are, we are going for gold in the next evaluation.
Yep.
And. It would be interesting to see if there's some way we could involve the university in supporting that. That, if we could say Yuk- Yukon is working with the town on sustainability issues. I don't know whether that would meet any of the categories, but it would be neat to put it in there.
You're seeking gold certification for a building?
No, Sustainable CT, which is that municipal.
Yeah, sure, yeah, they just introduced gold level for the first time.
Got it. Neat.
Yeah, I have a, I, I, I told. I think I told Lynn this, the, the plaque that they issue. Which. You do certification or recertification every three years and every time I walk by it in our hallway, it really bugs me because. It, it doesn't say. Certification, like the, the little button doesn't say. Twenty nineteen through twenty-one, it just says a year, and so it looks like we have gaps. Cause it just says the year we got. Recertified, which is every three years. I've had two people ask like, oh, well. It's like we keep like lapsing every, every two, no, no, it's for three years, you know, but just. Does not suggest that when you look at, they really gotta fix that.
All right. Establish an annual meeting to report on town gown activities.
Yet another meeting?
Don't we have meeting minutes to highlight all the things that we're talking about?
I mean, I don't know that we need a meeting, but maybe. And we also have a lot of communication pieces, but I, I don't know, what do we want to say about this? I mean, it's important to effectively communicate this, we could always do a better job, but. Yeah, so.
I mean, the, the reality is, aren't the meeting minutes of all town meetings made public?
Yeah, what does Margaret think about this?
I wonder if. You know, i- is this something that we should be? Thinking about some sort of an annual report, even if it's not a meeting. And we also have a partnership. Right, that outlines a lot of the things that we do and whether th- this gets folded into what we report out on, on the partnership side.
Why don't we just put it in the annual report?
Is it in the town's annual report?
Yeah, we could do a focus on this, on the town-university relations as a section in the town's annual report, that makes sense.
When does the annual report for the town come out? Well, it hadn't come out in years and we reinstated it, I think we had like a six-year hiatus or something. So we just did an annual report, literally fresh off the printer. In recent days, so. And it's tied to a fiscal year, so we kind of. You know, we might be a little later than we would normally target for. A fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, you know, we might try to be issuing them in the fall or something. So we could probably do, maybe, I think we meet in May for the town, for our town-university relations meeting, or June, could we do a? One of our meetings be dedicated to highlighting or taking notes on what we accomplished this past year?
Sure, but you know, frankly, John, I don't think people read the minutes either, the idea of having a meeting was to, to. Make it very public what had happened, but. You know, we have lots of public meetings that nobody shows up to, so I have. Uh, I, I'm not supportive of this, I think you don't have to be.
So this is Susanna, I, I have to say, as newest, newest member of this committee. I found out more in one meeting. About both the place I work, Yukon, and known town. In a more efficient manner than I. I, I just, I can't describe. Different it is to hear a bunch of. Consolidated updates from both sides in a way that is not packaged on either side. You know, I heard, I'd heard things that I wouldn't, I wouldn't, they weren't secrets, but things that just don't get shared the same way on the university side, don't get, so I. There are two parts to this, one is a retrospective. But I actually read the force of this one as the. We'd love to hear the five-year plan from Yukon so that we can ask questions. I don't actually think the force of this is update us on all the boring parts of the, all the meetings you've had and all the, I hear the force of this is. We, we, you know, a lot of people in town who don't. Where would they find out the sort of big stuff, like this, this, like all the wonderful stuff, Sean? I just love that stuff, like all, all the cool stuff and all the stuff coming and all the building plans and I, yes, I know there's a website and I don't go there because I'm busy and I'm working and, you know. But. I just wonder if people want a forum where they, where they can hear about this biggest tenant of ours in Mansfield. The name of that tenant is the University of Connecticut and they would love to hear. What the big stuff going on is, that's how I read this, now maybe others are reading it differently, I don't, I don't think anyone wants a summary of actions for the year.
So is it like, highlight the ways? I, I think it's be general modify, modify, develop a method to highlight the ways that. Uh, you, the town. And Yukon collaborate.
Yeah, I, I would agree that flexible language, I mean, we want to get the information out, but I don't think it has to be this sort of prescriptive, this is a. I think I would say a very traditional kind of way of thinking about how. Information and, you know, the formalities of delivering it and, yeah.
Yeah, this is like fun stuff, this should be like really cool and exciting. We won't talk about, we'll talk about transportation versus transit and like, like has to relay people kind of information about, because there's a lot of really positive things that. Never get shared and that's a shame. But, you know, not to minimize, communication is. Takes a lot of time and has to be, it's. It's a skill. All right, we're almost there, people, we, we've got. Three more, we can do this.
Okay, that's ongoing, encourage joint meetings with other communities, isn't that ongoing?
And you might want to point out not only the partnership, but the four, four-town collaborative, the Connecticut Countryside. And it's, as I said, it's somewhat dormant, but it may get going again.
Yep, definitely should, because again, this is largely retrospective, looking back, I, we should definitely be referencing the four-town work.
And the taste of two towns, which takes us in a different direction.
Okay, so, all right, next one. That's all, that's just, I think this is ongoing, that's sort of a-
Yep, ongoing.
Uh, oops, okay. All right, last one.
Ongoing.
Ongoing and make more general. You think? What are, what do you think, Ryan? Cause I think you and Maria are the ones who do this, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at the actual verbiage, that's all, one second.
Can someone give me, it's hard to be dense on this one, can somebody give me an example of a shared service with, with UConn right now?
Well, so, so, first reason why I wanted to read it was, so, shared services with UConn, I'm not aware of any.
The partnership, the partnership.
Well. Isn't, isn't WRTD a shared service that we repay into that, the town pays into it, romantic? Uh, well, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, okay.
It's a regional service that we all support.
It is, yeah. I guess, yeah, so when I, I'm thinking of the, the partnership, of course, the partnership is a, you know, it's its own incorporated entity, so like for me, when you say shared services, I'm thinking like we share finance, we share IT, we share facilities, et cetera, like across, like our public schools and the town.
Public safety, trash collection, those sorts of things.
Yeah, so I mean,
You can just pick up our trash?
Those are, you know, those are examples, um, I guess, yeah, I mean.
Are the sewer services shared?
Can we make this a little less wonky and make it like just oper- I mean, we're, we're looking for ways to ca- to collaborate, right, but maybe it needs to be, that shared service term is something that
Well, you know, I, I mean, so, I do want us to be imaginative here, I mean, I think, you know, there's all sorts of reasons, labor laws, other reasons why it might be hard to do, but I mean, you know, certainly conceptually, I think there's a lot of reason for us to think, like, shouldn't the town and UConn be able to, more than just collaborate, but consolidate's a very scary word, but do something more, uh, in particular, like in public safety, right, police and fire, where there's a lot of, uh, jurisdictional kind of issues, I mean, we're all, it's, yeah, so I mean, I, I think, uh, I like the idea of language that, while not being prescriptive, um, does kinda en- encourage us to consider, you know, going back to that well and, and looking at what the options are for ways that we can, um.
And who knows, in five years, maybe there will be some sort of grant that encourages this, and that's what this document is really for, is to say, hey, we, um, we prioritize this in this, but we don't know if it's gonna happen.
Yeah, right, we said we always wanted to, and hey, now you have the funds to help us do it.
And look at the conversations we've had in the last couple of meetings about the multi-use trail, you know, that there may be a way, you know, to collaborate with our resources on solving that issue, so. So yes, less wonky is good.
We've also had some real collaboration around traffic issues on one ninety-five and South Eagleville with, with UConn sharing signage uh, and, and some other things with us.
I, I think this whole, this whole exercise that we've been doing is really looking at ways where the town and UConn collaborate. Um, so, but this sort of calls out specific things that, so I don't know, I think maybe ongoing, look for creative ways to accomplish this, do you think that works?
You know, I would also suggest just eliminating all the words that are not in italics because you've got a couple of positions that are being expressed in there. Some people are very nervous about shared services cause they're not sure we're getting our money's worth. And you see that in the bottom part of the paragraph, and in the top part of the paragraph, you see people who endorse this. I, I, I think it's, uh, I don't know whether it's my legal training or my, my political background, but I always hear voices behind these words. And I can tell you whose voices there are in this paragraph.
Could I propose a, a new sentence?
Yep.
Identify opportunities for shared resources and analyze options that limit fiscal and service impacts.
Did you write that down? Can you put it, if you did, could you put it in the chat?
Okay.
If you wrote it down, and then I could just copy it.
Okay.
I'm actually not sure, can you do that? I feel like the chat feature, I think I've run into this before, can you copy and paste from the chat?
I think so. Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Well, I think you can, we'll, we'll find out.
I'm not typing it a second time, Jennifer.
What?
I'm not typing it twice. Whatever you need, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, so, um, this is the last, um, action, but uh, any like, big picture things that I should be conveying to the consultant that you would wa- like to leave us with?
I, I think that one of the things that has happened over the last ten years is that the formalities for, um, the, for both the formalities and the informalities for collaboration between the university and the town have increased substantially. And that certainly within the past couple of years, there has been a, a substantial, uh, commitment on the university's side toward working with the town.
So, that, we've, we've made progress.
Yes.
I, I think, certainly, you know, in the time that I've been on the council, now I know Betsy had really good working relationships with, with individuals, but and she, she built the partnership, but I think the partnership has produced a whole range of other kinds of collaborations um, that have been very positive.
I think-
Agreed.
And it's also our police chiefs, you know, our, our sergeants have been very effective in working with UConn, uh, UConn police to do all kinds of community stuff. Um, and improve the quality of service that we're providing to students as well as other mem- other people in town.
I, I think that one of the things is that, you know, any, any relationship kind of like, depending on who the players are, go, goes through these ebbs and flows, and I think we've done a really good job. And we're on a really good track, and I think one of the messages, the high-level messages is just con- continue to, like, pay attention to this relationship. Because it's, you know, inevitably, there's gonna be like bumps in the road, right, like anything, so, um, I don't know how to say that, but, but that's, I think, cause I think we're doing a good job now, uh, there's always ways to improve, but, um, we're, we're sitting here at this meeting and we've spent like five hours together talking about this stuff. That's a good sign.
Yeah, I'm, and Mayor, and, and Jennifer, I was gonna say this similar thing, is that even some of the language in this, the, the original document clearly said there was contention. There was some level of contention with, the, when this document was written, and even the discussions we're having today have a strong indication that we've, we've moved past that or are moving in a really positive direction, so, to your point, Mayor and Jennifer, uh, I think that's a really important distinction to make to, as we move forward with this document.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment, and I know I've missed the first meeting, but I was gonna add that, I know it's a bit of a cliche phrase, but, you know, to presume good intent, but act with care, you know, that, that, that we wanna act, each side needs to act with care, but the bigger picture should be sort of presuming good intent with, with, with that, you know, care attached to it.
I think we have seen a real change in the university's approach to its relationship with the town. And you can see that in the appointments of high-level personnel who come to the relationship with a, with a willingness to commit to the town. And I'll give you several examples, Nathan, Andaliva, John, um, uh, Lloyd, when he was in the business, uh, head, head of finance was, was that way. I think Redenka has that approach too. And I've also found members of the Board of Trustees to be very respectful and responsive, so, um.
Plus we have, plus we have Sean, he's kinda like the shadow president, you can't forget Sean.
Not even close, keep me out of it.
And Kyle Muncie is the other one.
Yep, Kyle Muncie.
So, I, yeah, I'll, I'll type up a few of these notes, but I think, yeah, the tone could be shifted, it doesn't have to have any kinda, it's not productive to have like um, little passive-aggressive statements, I guess, I, I sometimes I see the, um, that a little bit in the in the goals, and that's because this was a community document and people wanted us to say some of those things, and we were in a different position, but, yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, this, this is a town document, obviously, like, we're gonna, just like UConn, you know, would engage with the town on certain things that ultimately, though, like, they're the primary custodian of, but I, I do think that, maybe the broader point I would make on this theme is that in the past, I think, you know, that, that the discussion, the, the language has sort of been about, not us versus them, but like, there's us and there's them, right, and so like, how do we, whereas I think if we frame it a little bit more as like, we're coming at this, recognizing, recognizing that our, that our, you know, our fates are intertwined, that there's all these shared goals, you know, as opposed to, like, well, they have their interests, we have ours, we're gonna see like how it all kinda shakes out and kinda work around the edges, like, no, like, we're literally in this together.
If, if I could offer, just to build on what's been said, I was involved with this plan when it came out, um, in my capacity at UConn, um, I was in a diff- slightly more limited role and I reported to, um, Tony, you may remember Beverly Wood?
I remember Beverly.
Do you remember too, Jennifer? And, and in fairness to those involved, I think there was also a general nervousness about what our master plan was gonna show. And because the POCD came out before the master plan, if I remember the timing right, it was in ways to try to influence what, where we landed with the master plan, and it did have some influence, I mean, the, the options for the hockey arena being one of them, where everyone was nervous about us putting it on the plan as a definitive location, which we never intended to do, but the hatching it and having more than one potential location was a direct result of that nervousness, so. Yeah, so, anyway.
All right, so I think, I think this has been really good, it's been, um, I, I think for me, it's just good to, like, we've laid out a bunch of stuff that certainly needs to continue to have conversations about, and maybe some more things as well, will come up out of this process. Thank you all very much.
So, uh, I think our business for the day is concluded, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Paul, all those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. We are adjourned.
Good job, Jennifer.
Thank you all very, very much, appreciate it.
Laura, if you wanna talk with me a little bit more about the committee, give me a call.
Yes, thank you.
Or actually, we could stay on right now, if you want.
Sure, I mean, I have to say that an awful lot of what I heard was very confusing to me, so I'm, stuff I don't know about, and I'm a perfect example of a town member who knows nothing about this relationship between the town and the campus, you know. I knew much more when I was on campus about what the development of the university was gonna be than I do now, I have no idea now.
Right, well, I think there's, uh, you know, it's, um, it's shifting, and, you know, one year they say they're, the-